We have everybody here, present except for Mr. Hughes. First item up is approval for September 11th and September 17th, October 2nd, October 9th, 9 minutes.
Move to approve September 11th, September 17th, October 2nd, and October 9th, 25 minutes.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Next item up, staff recognition.
Yes, sir, we have several tonight to recognize staff achievements and service to the school district. And we'll start with Mr. Kirkendall.
Mrs. Amanda Atwell. Come on up.
Look here.
You're in front of everybody. Ms. Atwell teaches math for us at Alma High School. She is one of the big reasons that Alma Math Course continued to grow and we continue to get recognized for growth. She stands, to me, what she's, makes her stand out is her positivity, her always trying to hone her craft. She gets better every year. She has developed into an outstanding teacher that a lot of other teachers try to emulate some of the things that she puts into place and some of the comments that I thought of of Ms. Atwell's that she just has focused effort and she practices her teaching skills with deliberate intent, always seeking guidance, our feedback, she accepts it, and always continuing to want to get better and learn and continue to grow. We appreciate you. You do an excellent job at Alma High School, so thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Atwell. Appreciate you. Mr. Corsi.
Yeah, this is Jill Bowie. Come on up. So Jill is our cafeteria manager at the middle school and there are so many things that she does that make her incredible in that position. First of all, she genuinely cares about the product that they put out there. She's always looking for ways to make food that kids are gonna want, you know, that she's always trying to figure out, okay, well, what are they gonna like? If we do this, okay, what can we, what can we do to make them like it more within the rules? You know, y'all know there are a lot of rules we gotta follow.
Oh, yes.
And so she, and that's challenging to stay within those guidelines and make all the kids excited about the food at lunch. And she just works really, really hard to make that happen for kids. Her and her whole staff genuinely care about the kids. They really go above and beyond to make sure that those kids have a great experience in that part of their day. For that 30 minutes as they go through that line and eat their food, they work to make sure that part of their day is great. And we get a lot of feedback from parents about that, about the quality of the food and how the kids enjoy lunchtime. I mean, I had a parent a couple of weeks ago email just to tell me that. The whole point of the email was to tell me how much her child enjoyed lunch and the food at lunch. It's just been a great experience for our kids in the cafeteria and it wouldn't happen without her leadership, so we appreciate her very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Bowie. Appreciate it. Appreciate it. Miss Lyon.
All right, I've got Madison Yates and Shelby Thomas and Ally Smith. Look at 'em. There are so many reasons why these three ladies could be standing here, and it's really hard to narrow it down, but the reason they're here today is because they have done incredible this work this year. They have brought to life this idea of fifth grade ambassadors, which was a thing and then went away, and it's now a thing again. And they are always looking for ways to, from the very beginning, from the process of selecting who the ambassadors were gonna be, it was very well organized and managed, to the opportunities, they're always seeking out opportunities for the students to show their leadership skills, to grow as leaders. They're working in Career Day, they're helping with third grade, great start, they're volunteering their time to run stations, they're running really great fundraisers where teachers end up being completely covered in tattoos, which was fun for the kids and fun that something that they really wanted to manage, and these ladies are just growing these kids in such amazing ways. And so I just wanted them to know how much we appreciate them and to feel the love tonight.
I always wanted to be an ambassador, but never made it.
Lead ambassador right now. Look at you, all right, teacher.
I always tried, very much. Mr. Roller, maybe we do these pairs on who works together?
Either way, you wanna do it?
Let's do it that way.
Okay.
We've got enough room.
All right. Let's start out with Jessica Gillingham and Ashley White. So tonight, you're gonna meet all of our pre-K teachers and assistants, you know, if you've been around Alma very long, you'll know that when you do something new or you add a program or you add a facility, it better be good. It needs to be the best. It needs to be, you know, well managed and, you know, so adding pre-K to the primary school after being there 23 years or whatever it was, I was a little bit nervous, we gotta make this good. I knew you can have the best facilities, which you have to have the right people in place. And, you know, the ladies that we have, you know, there with those kids all day, pre-K, I'm still learning some stuff about pre-K, but they just do a phenomenal job. They greet parents in the morning, they greet parents in the afternoon, and just you go in there and it's just a joy to go in, and it's very much appreciated what you guys do. Thank you very much.
And the majority of Ms. Gillingham's class are three-year-olds.
She has the ovens.
Would you like to say anything about your three-hens?
I love you all so much. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Aaron Sanders and Amanda Nelson. I failed to mention that last year, Jessica and Aaron were the first two teachers there, and Ms. Nelson also, and Ms. Snyder, and, you know, got us started and now we're, you know, we've added another classroom and maybe we'll add another classroom later, I'm not sure, we'll see. But once again, just seeing these ladies, you know, they meet the needs of the kids coming in, you know, they're crying and they, you know, never been anywhere and they don't wanna leave mama and, you know, just seeing them take them and console them and, you know, every day, and then you see the tears go away and then, boy, they're excited to come, just see them ready to go. So, once again, appreciate you guys very much. And Ms. Elefritz and Ms. Snyder. Ms. Snyder was here with us last year, Ms. Elefritz, I think Ms. Elefritz was the first person I hired when I became principal, if I remember correctly. And so we've been together a while, but she came to me, she said, "I think I wanna do pre-K," and I said, "Are you out of your mind?" But no, we let her in there for a day or so and she just, she came to me and she said, "I just love it, it's what I wanna do," and just done a phenomenal job. And when we were kinda doing the pairs and stuff, I thought, okay, you know, Ms. Snyder's done it a year, so we're gonna pair you two up and, you know, and it's just been great. Just can't say enough about the program. You know, I just, I'm excited about it. Like I said, at first I was nervous about it 'cause it needs to be good, and all six of you ladies have taken it to a wonderful level and very much appreciate it.
There's one more, hang on, Mr. Hughes. There's one more round I didn't tell anybody about this. It's National Principals Month this month, and we have, we have a, what I would consider a dream team of principals. And, you know, we have been working on a few things over the last few years, and the collaboration that these four do with each other, make sure their staffs do the same thing, and all of the gains in achievement, gains in all kinds of things with kids and programs and, and good teaching and learning going on in every building. And the process with PLCs and how they monitor that and supervise that, it's just phenomenal work and the results are showing and paying off over time. And so this is just a, just a small token of recognition for the sacrifices you make being building principals, not just eight to three, it's sometimes six to 10 at night many times, and lots of activities and lots of responsibility. And I truly appreciate everything you do for the school district, this community, the staff and students. And so this is for you, if y'all will come up and... Dr. Wood, Mr. Biggs, anything you wanna say?
We appreciate it.
Watch out, Mr. Biggs.
God, it's do the work that we do without these people, and they make my job easier every day by how amazing they handle their staff, their parents, the students. We are great because of these guys standing right here.
Y'all wanna say?
Amen.
Thank y'all very much. Thank you, thank you.
Next item up, public comment. No public comments, no. Next item up, consent agenda. Any comments on that, Dr. F?
No, I have nothing to pull out.
Move to approve consent agenda.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item up, superintendent's report. Yes, we'll start with Dr. Wood.
She's getting ready, I wanna, I'll just mention one thing.
This is just the regular report, Dr. Wood, not that yet.
Oh, sorry.
Not that yet.
I don't have any.
She's excited. Kinda make me nervous. Okay, Mr. Biggs, we rehearsed this well.
That's right. One real quick thing is the so-called tornado wind, whatever, we finally got the awning back up at the primary school. It took a while, but we finally got that yesterday, I guess, right, Sean?
I think they finished it up.
So that and all the trees and everything, we finally got that taken care of, so that's positive.
Okay. Yeah, Dr. Wood's gonna be here in a minute. Enrollment, page 22, we have 3,003 K-12 and 56 in pre-K. That's as of today.
And 60 is max.
60 is the max we have, so we have four tuition seats open. We're still, we're advertising the fill, so I think, and then January is when we'll start the list for next year for the CCDM and tuition spots. Let's see, next, ASBA conference delegate, this is sent out every year, ASBA has requested every school board designated delegate for the December conference from the delegate assembly, so this is up to your nomination.
I was gonna say entertain a motion for it to be Dustin Hughes.
I would move to appoint Dustin Hughes.
We have a motion is second for Dustin Hughes to be the delegate. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, Lee, we'll let him know and then we'll...
No, I'll let him know.
You'll let him know. We'll notify the ASBA. You can let him know, Dallas. Okay, now to Dr. Wood and our annual report to the public, and her and I will tag team on this a little bit, and it'll be on the screen behind you. So if you need to move around, you're gonna be able to.
I should've looked at that agenda a little better, but I actually am very excited about this report. And tonight, I had Sencha email a few weeks ago about letter grades, and so told you I'd give you some more detailed information about assessment and accountability, so that's what we're gonna do tonight, and, you know, I'm a nerd and all about some data, so I'll try to not spend as much time as I would love to spend on these, but this is a review what we're gonna, and I'll show this presentation with you also, and this will always go on the website so that parents can get on and see where we're at accountability-wise. So, start with the descriptors, the level descriptors. This assessment that we take is called the Atlas, and it's got the level 1, 2, 3, and 4. There was discussion last year about what really it does a level 2 mean, and so I wanted to point that out one more time, that they say that level 2 does mean students are on grade level. It could be in different levels of grade level, but if a student is on level 2 in literacy, math, or science, that they are on grade level. So there's a little tiny dotted line that you can see there. Now, when we talk about the letter grades that come out, they just count levels 3 and 4 as proficiency. And so when you see things, we're gonna get information out to parents about how they can log in at conferences and see their student data and the descriptors that they mean. So if they're a level 1, it means they have some understanding, but it's very limited. Grade level, or level 2 is basic understanding, a level 3 means they're proficient, and a level 4 means they're advanced at their grade level. All right, so we've talked a lot in the last year about the new accountability system and the state saying that they wanted to be much more transparent. If you've been doing it, you know on the board for a while, you know that for many years it was a mystery how you got your report letter grade. No matter how you tried to figure out why you got what points or what, it was very, very difficult. You could guest estimate, but it was very difficult. So the state wanted it to be very transparent about how they got the letter grades, and so it's a little different for elementary schools and middle schools and high school, but it is much better. I love the new assessment, I love the Atlas and the information, great data from it, and I do like that you can figure how you got the grades. So the indicators over here on this side, they're gonna grade you in these different areas, and so it's like 900 points total, and I broke it down by school, but basically achievement is your level of 3 and 4, your students who scored a level 3 and 4 on your state assessment. And then there's a growth factor in there, and you get points, you get a percentage for the percentage of students who hit their target growth. So of all your students in your building, if they hit their target projection, you got a percentage points for those, and then growth of your lowest quarter. So your bottom 25%, you get score for those students too, so you're the furthest behind students and they're growing. And then the bottom one only applies to high schools, your success rate graduates, that goes along with what we talk about, when we talk about CTE completers. So it's just our students graduating on time, and what's their pathway for enlistment, enrollment, or employment once they graduate? So there's all these success factors. So this is what's on the next screen, I did it by school. Oh, skip one. So these are the letter grade cut scores. It won't mean a lot to you until I go to the, where we've got our actual letter grades, and then I'll break it down by school, but when I show the presentation, you can look back and forth of where the cut scores are for, that the state set for each building, elementary, middle, and high schools. All right, so our report card status for this year, Alma Primary School is a C, Alma Intermediate School is a C.
Let me stop you there.
Okay.
Just to interject, the reason they're exactly the same is Department of Ed views this as a K-5 effort on the assessment. So they take data K-5 to generate, generate this, especially this year with the K-2 taking the assessment for the first time. So that's why those are identical. That's for basically K-5.
Now, a lot of elementary schools are K-5, and there's lots of different configurations of schools, but because the actual Atlas assessment, even though we're doing screeners and we did have a summit of K-2 last year for the first time, which is gonna be great for us to have K-2 data, but right now it just goes from there to 10, so that's why those grades are the same. Alma Middle School is an A, and Alma High School started a B, but they realized there were some errors with the, we also realized there were some errors and we submitted, you know, could you look at these questions? And then they sent out an email that, yes, there were some course codes that didn't pull accurately from those CTE courses for kids who should've been completers and concentrators, so they went back and changed our grade to an A. So, the next one is the state median, and I like to point that out 'cause it's just always important to me to know where we're falling on other schools. So even though we are still a C at primary and intermediate school, we're holding, you know, we're a little bit above the state median. I know things are gonna get better there with the things we're putting in place through all those, you know, with remediation for students. And then you'll notice the cut scores are different for each grade span, so the state, that's always seems weird too, but the state had a panel of 30 experts in each grade span, and those people went through all kinds of things with the, you know, where the medians were, and they decided those cut scores to make it fair amongst the different grade spans. All right, so like I said before, this is the way they got the formula, and it makes it much easier, like you could even use the calculator that they put on the Desi's website this year and get pretty accurate even before you got all the, you know, the data back, that you could, you could see where you should fall, and that's what's important to me. You know, I think accountability's important, but I think it's also important for you to understand the rules of how you're being held accountable. I think this is much better. So this is intermediate school and primary school together, like I said, that's the way they do it for now. So the achievement, if you look at that middle column, is done separately for each of the sections that they're tested on, ELA, math and science. And so that first block is the number of students in the middle, the number of students who scored a 3 or a 4 on the state assessment. And so then those just translate straight over to points earned, and if you look at that last column, you can figure out how many points you got. There were 300 points total, we got 112.88, and then underneath each one of those, I just put where the... We got 112.88, and then underneath each one of those, I just put where the state average fell on those. The second little group, the growth of all students, so that's going to be all students in your school, and that percentage is the percentage of students who met their growth target that was set for them. It's, it's not like old standards tests, each kid's is a little different. It's based on years of data and their growth projection. So that percentage of kids in that middle column is the students who met their target growth. The bottom block, the growth of your lowest quartile, or a quarter of students, same thing. So that's your, your students who are the most behind in that grade level, and those are the percentage of students who met the growth target that was set for them. And so that translates right over to total points. You add those up, there's 900 points total, and then up and underneath what the state average was for elementary schools. All right, this is middle school. Not going to go through all that again, but that, a middle school is exactly, figured the exact same way as elementary schools. And in high school, the first part, the achievement and the growth of all students is the same, and then where it changes is it goes to the, the growth of the lowest quarter, or quarter, they say quartile sometimes, so I'm struggling with that. So, but I hear they say quarter. So the only thing that's different is they, for high school students, they lump the ELA, the math, and the science together for a combined score. They did that so they could keep the total number of 900 consistent among the schools. So that's just, it's the same growth percentage, it's just all added together. So that's the percentage of the students who, that's that bottom quarter who met their growth. And then the thing that's different is the success-ready graduate, so that applies only to high schools, like I said. And so the cohort graduation rate, we had 98.25% who graduated on time. That's a wonderful graduation rate to have, so we're really happy about that. And then students graduating with merit and distinction. I've talked about that before, about the different pathways to get merit and distinction. Even though that technically will really, really apply to kids who graduate in 2028, which would've been last year's ninth grade class, they still wrote the business rules to align with merit and distinction, so that's why those words are there. So those are the students who, enrollment, enlistment, or...
Employment.
Employment. So that meet those pathways. So you get a score for those, and then total equals 900 again, and then I included the state average, so you can kind of know where we compared with high school. All right, and then these are broke down. This is just like data that we analyze when we first get the Atlas data back, and these correlate to the scores that I just went through, but I just broke down by each grade level, or each section, literacy, math, and science. And so this is where we scored as a district, and the green, these are our percentage of students who scored a 3 or 4, which would be considered proficient by the state, and in this, in the gray color on this one is the percentage of state, where the state fell. So this is in literacy, and that's grades 3 through 10. This is math, grades 3 through 10. I will mention the old test, ninth grade and 10th grade, took just a regular general math test. This test moved back to, in ninth grade, Algebra I and geometry in 10th grade, for the most part. There are eighth graders who take Algebra I, and there are some outliers for kids who may have went to school somewhere else and it's in a different grade, but for the most part, that's going to correlate to your ninth grade and your 10th grade group. So again, in green is our percentage of threes and fours, and in the gray is the state. Here's our science scores, same thing. Used to, we took the same test, 3 through 10, but now 10th grade does not have it, and biology is the test for that. So there's not a ninth grade physical science type test like there used to be, or just a general science. So they take the regular test through, through eighth grade, and then in 10th grade, some ninth graders, but mostly 10th graders take the biology test. In green is our percentage of 3 and 4s, and gray is the state. I did include these because I think it's important to point out that even though the letter grades, the state report card only counts the 3 and 4s for proficiency, they consider level 2 students on grade level. And for the job that I do, I need to know kids are on grade level, are they reading, doing math, and doing science on grade level. So same system here, but in the green is the number of students who we have on grade level in each grade, and in the gray is the state's average. That's in literacy. Same on this one, this is math. And this is science. So proud of those because most of our students are performing on grade level, and that's what we want to see. This one is a cohort comparison, so we always just kind of look at, so this would be the same group of students. So if you look at that first box, for example, the kids who were third graders last year, but were fourth graders this year. So you're comparing the same kids from one year to the next. So I wanted you to understand all the numbers, like go to the specific numbers, but these are percentages. So what you would want to see on this is that you have more green boxes than red boxes, which means that particular cohort of kids from third grade to fourth grade, or from fourth grade to fifth grade are moving forward in percentage points of, of being proficient instead of backwards. We have a couple outliers, and one that was neutral, but for the most part, in all areas, we're seeing, seeing green boxes with a group of kids growing from one year to the next, and so that's very positive information. This is a, not a cohort comparison, so this is literacy, just on this screen, this is literacy. This is kids from 24 to 25, which you're talking about different groups of kids, but it's like the third graders this year compared to the third graders last year, which compare some of those, you know, apples and oranges, right? But what you do want to see is in 24, are my scores this year, are they higher? Like, and so we do, for the most part, see a trend, they're either very, very close or right, right where they need to be as far as going the right direction. So each, you know, each year we're getting better. That's the math comparison. Our, 2025 is in the gray. The science, 24 to 25. Something we want to celebrate, we found out this week, we have, this, this whole presentation is really worth the celebration, but we found out from, they're being recognized by the Office of Education Policy, which is a group out of the University of Arkansas. Basically what they do, they compile lots and lots of data from the state, and so they can let schools know about their data, they can also find out what's going well different places, they can inform policymakers. So being recognized, the middle school for high math growth statewide, high math growth in the Northwest region, and high overall growth statewide. So very excited about that. Our high school is being recognized for high overall growth statewide. So that was a nice recognition to get this week. Something I want to mention, it doesn't really go with update, but just something I want you to know because there's going to be letters going out to parents. I will mention, we do not have K-2 data yet. Last year was the first year we gave that assessment. We got some screener data through the year, but they had to norm all that, so we're supposed to get it in mid-October, so I'll probably update you on some of the things we get back from K-2. But third grade promotion, so this is something new to our state, but at the end of the 25-26 school year, third graders who do not meet state-defined minimum in reading standards and don't qualify for a good cause exemption will not be promoted to fourth grade. So if you go back to the screen where I had the different levels, so that's going to apply to students who score a level 1, all right, which means they're not reading on grade level. So we'll have to look at those students when, when, after they take the test of it in the third grade, we'll have to look at our good cause exemptions, meaning there's some sort of reason, documented reason, we'll have to provide that we've provided those students intervention, and there's some different things we can do to support those students, but we'll have to look at those because it is in wall now that they have to be on grade level before moving into fourth grade. So just looking at that. So it'd be any kid, they're considering 2 and up, students are on, on grade level. So in the future, the tests that we're getting in kindergarten version 2 will help keep us informed on these students who are at risk, and that we'll be able to provide the supports that they need. It is not the goal to retain third graders. It is the goal to get them the support that they need and, and get everybody moving the right direction. But I did want you to know, because there's letters on things like this go out, and I want you to be uninformed about that, but it's called the third grade promotion as well.
Right. One thing I'll interject, and as far as a statewide number, if it was enforced last year, I think it was Legislative Committee, 10,000 third graders would have been retained statewide.
Yeah.
Kept in fourth grade, about 10,000. Okay.
Anyway, our goal is not to retain...
That's right.
...a bunch of third graders. This year's group, we'll have to, you know, really look at because we didn't have a lot, we were doing the worst with, as far as state assessment data, we didn't have a lot. Mr. Bowler and Ms. Lynn and I have already started meeting, talking, thinking about the kids we could see already that we think are at risk, making sure those supports are in place for those students. So, any questions? Like I said, I'll send this presentation to you, and it'll be on the website tomorrow for other parents who have got this question, if they have any.
Congratulations on all the scores. It was impressive.
It was fantastic.
I'm glad that wasn't in place when I was there. I never made it off third grade. Oh. Oh, come on.
You're an engineer. That wouldn't...
That doesn't mean you can read.
Well, that is true.
Thank you, Dr. Wood, thank you. New business, student disciplinary action? Yes, I've got this for you to review. You are allowed to go in closed session if you need to deliberate. Moving to executive session to deliberate.
Second.
Motion second.
All in favor?
Disciplinary recommendation. We're moving to executive session to discuss student disciplinary action at 6:30.
Sure.
Yep. Make executive session at 6:50.
I move to approve the recommendation for student expulsion.
Second. Motion is second, any discussion?